All right, we'll go ahead and get started. It is six oh two. And for the sake of everybody's time, let's get the ball rolling. So it is, um, welcome. It is May sixth. And we have three or four items on our agenda tonight. We will start off tonight's agenda with the pledge of allegiance. And I'll go ahead and start that. So if everybody please rise. And if you repeat the pledge of allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Remind you to turn off the sounds on your phones and computers, I guess. So the first item on our agenda tonight will be to review the meeting minutes from, uh, May, was it, or April eighth? April eighth. Sorry, I'm still uploading mine right now. So April eighth, if any of the commission members have had the opportunity to review that. And if anybody has any changes or questions about the meeting minutes from April eighth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from April eighth.
I'll second it.
I have a second. Is there any member of the commission with a no vote?
I was gone.
All approved? Make note that it's all approved. Then the first item on our agenda tonight will be the planned zoning change for Maggie's Bend. Actually, before we started on that, I'm gonna retract that. I always like to hear a recap from staff. Mr. Anderson, if you could let us know kind of a summary of actions that were taking place from the city council on the last city council? If there was any that were taking from our recommendations?
Jared, do you mind just running with that PowerPoint presentation? It's pretty simple. You guys reviewed two preliminary plats that both have been previously approved in your last meeting. And the city council followed your recommendation and approved them. It was Legacy Farms and Maple Mountain Estates. Two projects, both over kind of on the east side of town there around Maple Mountain High School. So that was the action that they took. Yeah, I just need to connect it, I think. There we go, maybe. So anyway, pretty straightforward. Wasn't a lot of discussion in the city council meeting on either of those two.
Okay, thank you. And then we'll go ahead and proceed then with the first item. Guess I need some water, can we talk? Excuse me, for the first item on our agenda, with the proposed zone change for Maggie's Bend.
Thank you. It's a project we've worked on a little bit over quite a few years now. The property was zoned R3 back, I believe, in 2008. So typically, we don't see that kind of lag from when we approve a zone change to when property actually develops. But in all candor, this is the type of project that we envisioned back when the zoning was changed. We felt at that point in time like this was an appropriate site for a little bit higher density residential use. The property is at the corner of eleven hundred east and eight hundred north. The best landmark I think we have in the area, this is Kmart right here. So you have Expressway Lane, McDonald's, eight hundred north right here, which ties into State Road fifty-one, as does Expressway Lane. This is eleven hundred east, which continues north of Expressway Lane out into the Canyon Creek Shopping Center and via different routes beyond. The subject property here is just about two and a half acres in size. The applicant has applied for the approval of this twenty-eight unit project, so a total of twenty-eight different townhome units. And those six buildings, like you see, arranged there. Originally, the applicant had applied for a project with a little bit more density than that and had a few different discussions about how to fit some other things on the site that we as staff felt were important. For example, little playground right there, some additional guest parking beyond what the initial proposal included. And also, the applicant originally was planning on units that had single car garages, which we can see has changed. We'll go in a second to the building elevation, so you can take a look at that. Pretty straightforward design, so this is tilted from what we were looking at just a second ago. This is eleven hundred east here, this is eight hundred north. So the units are simply accessed by this. That's a driveway, right? Call them not a driveway, so this will be a private driveway maintained by the various homeowners there. Our ordinance requires multifamily residential projects. Incidentally, commercial projects as well, when they abut a residential use or property that's zoned residential, they are required to construct a masonry wall on that property line. So there'll be a six-foot tall masonry wall constructed here, given the residential zoning and use that's next door. We also require ten feet of landscaping with trees thirty feet on center along there. The northern property line, there'll just be a vinyl fence there. Entire site, of course, will be landscaped. Have guest parking somewhat scattered throughout the project, but driveways that are no less than twenty feet deep, along with the two-car garages. Will be quite a bit more parking available here than there's been in most of the townhome kind of projects that we've approved. Yeah, in fact, you can see it's an attached garage, two-car. That's the best elevation maybe to look at. With, as well, like I said, a driveway that would accommodate conceivably.
The entrance door is to the right or left of the doors? To access the townhome itself?
Exactly, so this is the man door there. You have the garage next to it. Looks like there's a little bit of relief from the man door right here to the front of the garage door there. We require in projects of this type, which the only way we can approve multifamily units is as part of our infill overlay. And with that, there's some architectural requirements that come into play, including the buildings all, the buildings have to be clad in some type of a masonry product. That's obviously brick, rock. We count stucco as a masonry product as well. And several years ago, we added cement-based lap siding to the list of things that are acceptable exterior cladding materials for homes in infill overlay developments or master plan developments. So that's what these units will be clad in. As I understand it, is that, there's some different company names that the products go by, but basically, it's a cement-based lap siding that I understand has great longevity and maintains and wears well over time, so. So with that said, this project comes to you tonight with a recommendation from the Development Review Committee for approval. That's approval of the preliminary plat for Maggie's Bend with the infill overlay. We have advertised to have a public hearing tonight in your meeting, so that's something we'd love to have you address.
It's not listed as a preliminary plat review, it's listed as a zone change for an infill overlay. So are we reviewing, approving the?
There's two, you'll see the first side of this.
They're probably separate items, yeah. I had, I squoze them both together on the staff report, but.
Okay, I haven't seen it. Okay, thank you.
As far as the guest parking, so they've got, looks like three different places for that, is that right?
Four.
Four?
Just a couple there.
So is there a written amount of guest parking per unit? How does that, so there's twenty-eight units. How many stalls of guest parking is, would there be?
I can tell you what the minimum is, I believe they exceed that here. The minimum is you need one guest parking space for every three units, basically. So something like two point, three spaces per unit's required.
Yeah, this does exceed that, doesn't it?
It does, yeah. And I, in our experience, it ends up getting used, though.
Oh, yeah.
At the same time, I've been in developments like this where clearly there's an excessive amount of parking and then it simply seems to become RV or boat storage or different things like that, that tends, I think, to be problematic as well, so. Trying not to overdo it, but we certainly don't want to have some of the situations that we have in some other townhome projects here in the city.
Was there a neighborhood meeting? I noticed it says here that.
Yeah, I'll let the applicant report on that if he'd like to add anything else, but I know they had a neighborhood meeting yesterday and nobody came, so.
Hot dogs?
Terribly uncommon, but.
All right, any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for Maggie's Bend. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to come forward with the discussion about Maggie's Bend? Okay? Let the record note that there is nobody present. And at this time, I will make a motion to close the public meeting for Maggie's Bend and we'll entertain a second on that.
I'll second it.
And we have a second. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward and if there anything you would like to share with us in addition to what staffs shared with us to the commission? Okay? Good. Is there any questions for the applicant from the commission?
So you just haven't had any feedback from the neighborhood?
No.
You had the one meeting and they never?
Yeah, I had a meeting yesterday at one o'clock here in this room.
How was it publicized?
I sent a, uh, yeah, I sent a letter.
I, um, we had our GIS provide the addresses and I sent it to Paul and then Paul mailed out notices of the.
And I'm Paul.
So Paul, this has been a while in getting to this point, it sounds like. What is your schedule for buildout on this project? Do you have a schedule, an idea of how long this will take to build this out? Are you gonna do it in phases or?
Yeah, we're, our plan is to do units twenty-four through nineteen, nineteen through twenty-four first. We hope to be completely built out within eighteen months.
And I'm, I know that this has been back and forth and through DRC, but there are some water in that area. You don't have any concerns with the water levels and all that kind of stuff that's in that area?
No.
Looks like you've made some good improvements with the playground and the extra.
Yeah, the parking, I think we're at about four and a half stalls per unit, including garage and driveway and then the guest stalls. So I think we exceed by quite a bit the requirement.
What's the schedule for the wall, the six-foot wall? As far as the building of that, I suppose you're gonna build that as you build the units, or?
That would go in, um, probably about the time we start the units, as we're, we've got a, we've got a trench down eleven hundred east to tap into sewer and so I think when we're wrapping up the development portion, we'd put the wall in as we start the unit nineteen through twenty-four.
I would like to put something as part of the conditions for that wall. Right now, it's very vague.
Yeah.
Um, you know, you said sometime in that area. I'd like to break sometime down to something. Can we agree on, you know, at the completion of nineteen through twenty-four, the wall will be done? Would that be?
Yeah, sure.
Is that fair?
Absolutely.
Is that something?
What's the normal, I mean, the normal process with the wall would be done with all the site improvements, sewer water, parking lot, everything. The buildings would come out, all the infrastructures. So then have side plan approved before they build. So the wall would be part of that side plan.
Prior to.
Does the, but on the site plan, it doesn't always designate time, though, does it, for that structure?
No, the side plan improvements will have to be done before the building permits are allowed.
Okay, so we don't need to have it as a condition that it's part of already the process?
I think this project is small enough probably that the infrastructure will be done at once, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we'll just leave it off then.
Occasionally, it's phased, we might talk about a certain piece of wall with a certain phase and things, but here, it's.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't.
They haven't really had a submitted phasing plan with this project, so we're assuming that it's all going to be built at once. All the buildings, not the buildings with the actual infrastructure.
Thanks for that clarification. Any, anything else for, anything from the commission? Thank you, sir. So if there's no more questions for staff and no more questions for the applicant, I would entertain a motion. We do need to break this down. I think we can do it both at the same time, but we need to do them separately, if that makes sense. We don't have to, so we need to, um, do a recommendation to the city council for a zone change overlay for Maggie's Bend and then a recommendation for approval of the preliminary, preliminary, preliminary plat. I would entertain a motion from one of you.
There's some, I'd like to make a motion. I just noticed that the staff recommendations, they've got a finding and then a condition. They, does that need to be talked about? Define the condition, that the applicant provide the necessary easements for the first phase of the development?
I think that's appropriate, yeah, but it's up to you guys.
So you can agree to do the same or you can add to that? So you can say, make a motion as stated from the DRC, the same findings and conditions, or you can add to that?
Can you explain that condition? I mean, is it?
Sure, it's private, but I mean, I know we need some easements.
Well, utilities, like water lines for this, we'll need an easement for it. So it's all our infrastructure, the utilities. Water lines are all retained by the city, so it's basically our utility easements. So we'll just have to have them in a place where we can proceed with the installation.
You can just make the conditions as part of the approval, as part of the motion to approve that they're, that it includes the following conditions.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed preliminary plat and infill overlay with the findings and conditions to be as recommended by the DRC.
I second it.
So that was just, so you kind of did the infill overlay and the preliminary plat together. So are you separating them or together?
You can do them together?
Okay. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. I'll go ahead and do a roll call vote on this one from starting here on my right and go left.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye or nay, yes or no, it all works, right? All right, so thank you, sir. Free to go. Or stay around if we're that entertaining. How's that?
Good luck with the project.
Yeah, we'll watch it develop.
At this time, the next item on our agenda for the night will be a preliminary plat approval review and for Meadow Creek Ridge.
Once again, thank you. It's a property that we're talking about here. Forty-five acres. Really uniquely configured for a development. State Road fifty-one, I think sometimes that gets called the old Springville Highway. That kind of bisects the development. Then we have Spanish Fork Parkway, a new road that runs along the project's southern property line. The northern boundary of the project here, incidentally, is the Springville-Spanish Fork City Boundary. Got a large power line that runs through the property as well. So just a lot of kind of unique factors that lead to kind of an odd configuration for a project. I think it's good that actually are forty-five acres to work with. That makes it easy to put together a design that I think works fairly well. A couple of homes also. One here, another one over here that'll remain, just kind of be developed around. And with that said, we approved a preliminary plat for this development just a couple of years ago. And for whatever reason, actually, I think I know what a few of the reasons are at least, but for a variety of reasons, the applicant didn't move forward and record a plat within the needed period of time. So that approval has expired. So it's back before you tonight and then would go on to the city council for their consideration for preliminary plat approval. We did change the zoning back in 2013 and that, that remains. So the property today is currently zoned R1-6. And what the applicant has proposed is simply a standard subdivision. So you guys know, sometimes we talk about master plan developments, which are projects where it's not necessarily required that even though there's a six thousand square foot minimum lot size, let's say, that all of the lots meet that minimum. Maybe allow somebody to have an average of lot sizes that meets a threshold, do some different things like that to where some different components of a project's design become flexible. There's maybe a little bit of give and take between what an applicant wants to do and what the city would like to see happen. This is not that approach. This is the more straightforward, in my opinion, approach where the applicant just simply designs a subdivision. So that all of the streets meet our requirements, so that all of the lots meet a certain depth and width and overall square footage requirement. And when that happens, when all of our standards are met, we approve the development. So for me, this is almost anticlimactic to go through this process because in this case, the project does, it meets our criteria for subdivision in the R1-6 zone. We have had a few issues that we've worked out with the applicant relative to whether there should be some park space included in the project or not. I'll touch on more about that in just a minute. But in short, this comes to you tonight with a recommendation from the Development Review Committee for approval for, again, a standard subdivision in the R1-6 zone. Like I mentioned, we approved this project previously. There have been a couple of changes since then that I'll touch on. One has to do with the prospect of maybe having some wetlands on what you might see as parcel C over here. So because of that, the applicant has pulled back, is how I'd put it, their plans to develop lots, so it's to leave that vacant for the time being. And likewise, it's my understanding that should they reach a point with the body that authorizes construction in wetlands or oversees wetland mitigation, that type of a thing, they may come back and actually apply to have the approval amended so that that would be part of the developed area.
Is this road here currently in, Mr. Anderson?
No, it is not, so.
This is our secondary exit?
Yeah, that's a.
This is constructed, are we okay with only having one entrance and exit?
They will need to construct eventually a tie into State Road fifty-one here. That will have to happen.
At what point, though, do we need to specify that?
They can go, how far, how far can they go before this needs to be connected, Jared? This project here, should, should it not happen with anything else?
Fifty homes.
With one connection.
We allow fifty homes on one connection.
With that length.
Sorry, I stepped out for twice.
Yeah, okay. So we were just talking about this connection here and when that would be required. Incidentally, we've talked about, and let me mention this. We bought this property a few years ago, along with some other land that we bought in the area to accommodate, this is Legacy Farms here, the project we looked at last month. We know that eventually, there's gonna be a need for this to tie into. This is Spanish Fork Parkway that runs all the way over to tie into twenty-five fifty east, so fairly significant roadway. There will be a crossing here. There's been some discussion about the developer of this part of Legacy Farms maybe making that crossing so that they'd have a different door into their development here. So it's certainly possible that this road would be constructed before the developer would get over to that part and they'd simply tie in if that were the case.
Still fifty homes, there's no length to it. We're, it's fifty homes and we checked the water model to make sure the water system has pressure. Other than that, it's fifty homes.
Won't they build the, I mean, the first phases on the west side of the highway?
Yeah, that's what they've indicated on their phasing plan.
So they'll be constructing in those phases. How, what's the, what, what, how, how do we require them to do the phases? I mean, they have a period of time, I guess, to complete all.
Yeah, that's.
What, are there nine phases?
It's a good question. We'll let an applicant define what their phases are.
But it could be stretched out over quite a few years. I mean, it's not hard and fast, is it?
It could go on for a really, really long time. To keep a project's vesting, that is their approval in place, this approval that you're talking about tonight, the preliminary plat approval, they have to record a plat every year. So if you have nine phases, then conceivably, you could carry that out over the course of nine years. You could have twenty phases and make it twenty years if an applicant wanted. We don't, we don't play a role in dictating what that is, except that each phase needs to work. So if there's a need for water lines, sewer lines, or streets, or anything like that, the phases need to stand alone and that's something that we look at when we look at final plots.
I was just thinking their first phase would be closer to highway fifty-one. I don't know, it's just right in the middle. I was just curious.
They know, they know what they're doing, that's okay.
Any other questions for staff?
Doesn't look like there's any driveways coming out on this road at all, is there on this side?
Yeah, it's a U dot facility, yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Where does this one come out, just right there?
Exactly, yeah.
Doesn't come out here, does it?
There is, there's a connecting road here, yep.
Okay.
And it's a complete move.
Okay.
Well, don't pull me up. We just can't have an access. This is, this road cannot come out, we don't want the major access to come out of this. So that'd be made into a cul-de-sac. Yeah.
Is this road the developer's responsibility or is this somebody else's responsibility?
Yes.
No, because I couldn't, I didn't know whether you were saying that this road was going to be a road that goes through, but I wasn't sure where that, who was putting that in. But obviously, I mean, if it's required by the developer, he needs that road for this to work.
They do, and you know, maybe I'll let Mr. Nicholas Parker touch on that, but they, we require people to develop their frontage. That's, that's a fundamental, just simply requirement of development. So as I understand it, they'd be required to build that road. And because of the size of the road and the fact that it serves, I'll use this word loosely, but kind of a regional role. It plays a regional role in carrying traffic. It's just simply a big facility. Then it's eligible for reimbursement.
It recoup some of that money.
In this case, that would be through impact fees, so. I should say, a portion of its construction is eligible for reimbursement through impact fees.
It's by thirty percent of the whole road. So they know you're doing half road plus ten feet from the shoulder. So it's all done with math and its percentage, but the whole road is to pay back thirty-six or thirty-eight percent of it to pay back through impact fees on a major road like this.
Any other questions from the commission for staff? Thank you. At this time, invite the applicant to come up. If you have anything to add. If not, you can just say hi.
I don't have much to add. I can tell you why our phase one, it used to be up here where the white arrow comes down. I guess I got a pointer here. Phase one used to be up here. So this is gonna be two phases. There's about thirty lots in each one, or twenty, twenty-eight lots on each side. So we won't, if we do a phase here, only have twenty-eight, twenty-nine lots. Then when we do this next phase, then we'll automatically bring the road down here and come out, so we won't go over the fifty lots. But our phase one's down here now because we brought the sewer up from Walmart through the dump. That's what delayed us, this thing's taken forever. This hasn't been as easy I thought as I thought it was gonna be. It's been three years ago here in about two weeks, when we started it, so... And we have a wetland problem down here, as Dave mentioned, and not sure what's going to happen there. So pray that it doesn't rain.
Take it out of the pics, take it out of the picture for now, huh? I'm a boulder, I hope it rains like crazy.
Um, so now Spanish Fork Parkway's in, and, and our sewer's right, it's stubbed right there, where that dot is. And so we paid for it up to here, and now we're gonna, we, we were gonna go through here, can't get past the wetland problem, so we'll bring it up here further, come in here with the sewer, and then hopefully this road will come through here one day, like Dave said, and this road will come back here and come down like this, and we amend it, is what we're kind of thinking, but we just don't know. We won't know for probably, I think, two years at least.
So you're probably gonna hold off on these lots right here?
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna, we're not gonna do these for probably, if we do these, it'll probably be seven, eight years from now. So this whole thing, I can go, we can, it could really go eight or nine years, this whole project.
What, uh, what are you basing that on, just, I mean, uh...
When I pay the seller for the land.
What's that?
When I pay the seller for the land. So it's quite a bit of land to buy, and we just buy a little bit of a ti- at a time, so... And it depends on the economy, too. That'll be a lot of it, yeah. We might go a little faster, I mean, things are good now, but things might not be good in another couple of years, I don't know. So we want to play it safe, and that's why I, we didn't go broke in the recession, I think, because we're pretty conservative and careful, so... Anyway, that's, uh, that's basically, it hardly changed at all from, from the approval we had two years ago. We kept extending this approval because of the wetland problem down by Walmart, and then, then the sewer problem and getting it through the dump, and just kept going on and on, so...
What's the, uh...
So we, we changed phase one down here, and then we got rid of these lots, and this other stuff, all this and here is exactly the same.
So if we improve the lots, we just do, probably prove it again?
Yeah.
This is, uh, this is sound wall?
It's just the regular, uh, fencing wall, yeah, the six-foot. It'll have the, it'll have a tra- trail there next to it, a ten-foot trail.
Same thing on Fort North going east.
Like what we saw on White Horse there, that new wall that's been constructed?
White rail?
White rail, yeah.
Yeah.
So what's your timeframe on the wall versus...
Well, it's just in, it's fairly expensive to go along this road and this road, so we would just do where the phase one touches, is about here. That wall, that part of the wall would be put in right here, then we'd get to phase two, then we'd put this part in here, this wall. So we just do it in phases and sections.
So to be honest with you, I wasn't worried about the wall until you said eight years, and if everything around that develops faster than that, cosmetically, I don't know that I would want a half a wall, and then another half a wall, and then another half a wall.
Well, it's-
I understand economy and money and that kind of stuff, and it makes money, but it just, I understand that projects take time, but when you do things in chunks, the overall look aesthetically is not going to be the best.
So if you did, when you did phase two, you'd be complete to highway fifty-one, and you'd be going-
I think so. I think phase one goes from here to about here, and then I think phase two goes all the way up to here, does it?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
I think it does. Do you have a map there, somebody?
Yeah, yeah, it does, you're right.
So we're-
It goes right where you have it.
We're talking two sections of wall, and then this section here, who knows?
When would that road be turned into what it's ultimately going to be with the trail?
His side would be as he develops it, the other side is as develops, if development occurs, but that-
Is there a trail just on one side of it?
Yes.
His side or either?
It's next to the wall, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm like so.
So there wouldn't be a trail on the south side?
Are there power lines that run right up through here?
Yeah, big ones.
And so this is a corridor right here that can't be built on?
Right.
So thi- is this a buildable lot right here or no?
It is, uh, right there, that's where the house would go. Then they just have a big grass yard and, or garden, or both, or... You can't build, that easement's pretty restrictive. I don't think you can put trees in there either.
I don't think so. So that would be a lot that they would buy, understanding that no building would go, but just be green space or something?
Right.
And then, let's see, what's all of, what's all of this going to be underneath the, the lines?
This is all pasture part of this house, this whole thing, and this here. So there, she's gonna still water this for her horses. They're out there right now, if you drove out there.
What's the improvement concept for underneath the power poles? Is it just grass, is it continue to be weeds?
This is pasture right here, this whole thing, li- like it is today.
So you, you're not, you won't be involved in that section in the middle? That's owned by somebody?
I'm not, uh, yeah, I'm not buying that from them.
Yeah, so you, you don't own that at all?
But that's the family that owned all the ground.
Yeah.
And then these would just be, uh, you know, like here would be bigger lots. This lot right, this lot right here-
Yeah.
Is point four-five of an acre.
But you can only build on a quarter of it, or whatever.
Yeah, or less than that.
Less than that even, yeah.
Pretty sure my boy's gonna take that lot, he'll take good care of it, and then his cousin's gonna take this lot right here. Because you won't have any neighbors back here for twenty years at least, because there's no utilities in Springville, they're long, this ground will sit twenty years bare minimum. It'd be a miracle if this is built before twenty years, so it'd be nice for you out the back with no, no houses and...
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So just a reminder that this is a re, um, an approval, um, not a recommendation for the preliminary plat. One of the things that stays at our level. So if there's no other questions, I would entertain a, a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the preliminary plat for Metal Creek Ridge.
Got a motion by Commissioner Tagg?
Second.
I don't hear, who said second?
Gents.
Gents, Nelson has a second. And we'll start on my right with a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 And no oppose, we will move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is the text amendment for Title fifteen changes.
Really appreciated the discussion that we had on this last month, um, and, uh, just by way of a reminder, you did hold a public hearing then. Welcome to solicit public input tonight if you'd like, but-
I was gonna ask that, do we need to approve the, the working meeting at all minutes?
Um, I haven't finished those minutes, I might have a chance to.
Okay, but we do approve those eventually, right?
You'll see them on your next council or your next primary commission agenda, you'll have this month's phase meeting as well as that work session.
So just as a, I guess, a word to the public as we're on seventeen tonight is just, um, we did have a working meeting on, uh, Wednesday, don't remember the date of that?
Thursday.
Thursday the twenty-third, or Wednesday the twenty-third?
Thursday the twenty-third.
Thursday the twenty-third, and so those minutes will be available to review, and then we will, um, approve them in the next commission meeting in June, so, okay. So, all right, sorry, go back to the text amendment.
Well, I'm gonna be pretty brief, just because, again, I think we, we talked through things, and I really appreciated the input. Uh, you guys helped us identify, I think, one big deficiency that we had in our existing code, as well as a few deficiencies that we had in the language that we proposed last time. We tried to clean that up, um, I sent out a, a draft, then Commissioner Fallon gave me some comments as well that resulted in a couple of other tweaks. But, um, for whatever this is worth, both the city attorney and I are comfortable with where things are at now, and just as a reminder, uh, I really just want to clarify a couple of things. We're not looking at creating any new rules, but first of all, just making sure that everybody understands what the garage requirement is, and then making sure that everybody understands what an accessory apartment is. And, uh, that's really what, in my view, this all boils down to. So with that, uh, we've created some definitions that we didn't have before. Um, I think we've now made it clear, you know, what we're trying to accomplish with those definition, definitions, what the expectations are. Um, I think likewise, we've made, um, it clear that in certain cases, you don't, for example, need a full nine by eighteen foot wide space. That only comes into play if there's a garage requirement that you're satisfying with that space. So for example, I have a home with a two-car garage, and I want to add six feet to the side of my garage, there's no problem with that at all. But if, for example, let's say I'm building a townhome development and I'm required to have a garage, then six feet of width on the garage doesn't cut it. It would need to be nine feet wide and eighteen feet deep, like we spell out there. Um, we haven't had, you know, really much dispute with that, um, over time. Um, we've had a few discussions that I think, uh, have, uh, given good reason to just clarifying those types of things, so, again, uh, really not much different from what we talked about last month. Uh, I guess the other thing on the accessory apartments, we've clarified with the definition that we are talking about owner occupied structures, um, which is, uh, very common, I think, for cities to do, with simply the, uh, experience having been that, um, additional dwelling units in certain parts of communities, a lot of times, that's not a problem, it's not an issue of density, um, but rather, communities do run into certain types of problems, I think simply with more frequency, um, when, uh, the owners of those properties reside elsewhere. I guess simplest way I can put it. Um, so it's very common, I think, to see in different city ordinances, cities being more laxed with allowing additional dwelling units, um, provided that the owner resides in one of those units on a particular properties, and that's, um, at least been how we've approached things for a number of years here, and with this, we'll make that clear in the ordinance.
So the spirit of that comment is that if somebody's got a home and they want to rent out the basement, and it fits in these guidelines, and they live in the home, it's okay to do it. What doesn't work is if they decide to move to another location, they don't turn that into what would be duplex.
And in my view, the only difference between a duplex and a single-family home with an accessory apartment is the owner residing there. So you're right, that would then simply become a duplex.
Would be applicable, if that owner moved away, or tried to rent it to two different families, that would not be what you're trying to do with this accessory apartment.
That's exactly it, yep.
Which happens?
It, it does, and, you know, of course, for us here, we've got a long history of, of allowing duplexes and things like that, and they'll continue to exist, you know, ones that, that, uh, were legally approved before. Um, so we're really just talking about, you know, maybe existing situations where somebody might want to add an accessory apartment to a home and that type of a thing, but, um, as that happens, and it certainly will, um, we'd simply follow this definition as we go through that.
So that's still a work in progress, and we'll get some, I know you, you just said that, uh, working with the city attorney and finalizing it, but probably look at approval and probably, if we don't get it by in June, July is tough with all the activities in town, but at least by August, you think?
You know, on these, sooner than that, I think, just these changes here, yeah, depending on how you guys feel about them largely.
Okay, so they'll be coming back our way here soon, so...
Well, if you guys, if you make a recommendation to approve them tonight, next time you'll see it is with an updated copy of the city ordinance, because they'll be, uh, they'll go to the city council, uh, conceivably in a couple of weeks for their consideration.
Okay, so I apologize, I misunderstood, I thought you referred into that there was still a work in progress, and there wasn't, I didn't, I don't see it as, as a motion tonight, I thought we were just reviewing it, so are you looking to have a motion made on it?
Uh, that's up to you, but that frankly is my preference, if you're ready, yeah.
Disgusted, so this isn't the right wording, though, that we're seeing up here now for the garage, that's the old wording, right?
That is the old wording, yeah, so, um, I've got a Word document-
I can see the new wording.
-of G shared planning, and we sent out the updated language, yeah.
It's interesting what you're describing as a garage, um, and you do an attachment to that indicating that, you say a garage with space for at least one vehicle and additional space, so that a minimum of two parking spaces per unit are, are provided. So one is requirement for a garage in certain situations, but there's an add-on that says each unit does have to have two parking spaces, but not necessarily do they both have to be in the garage, is that right?
So I think we got it right, based on your explanation, that's exactly what we mean.
Okay.
Uh, and we played around with a lot of different ways to phrase that, is that you need two spaces, but only one of them needs to be a garage.
Yeah.
Of course, you can say that a lot of different ways, but...
Yeah.
That's, that's exactly how, and, and that's the rule today. So we, again, we're not trying to change the rule, we were just simply trying to clarify it.
Well, that's not a bad way to do it, because somebody building a garage may think they've met the rule for parking requirements, but you've added that, yeah, with the garage, but they still need that. If it's a single-car garage, they still need extra space.
Exactly, yep.
Have, has everyone read, uh, the red lines that they send out for, for the update? This, this isn't right, well, here it is now.
Now, this is the latest and greatest.
Yeah, okay, this is the way that it was changed then.
So this proposed ordinance that's at the back, that contains all the changes?
It does, yeah.
That's what the city council would be, yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
But we can make the recommendation that they be approved. That, we're just making that recommendation on this, aren't we?
That's correct, yeah. At least I hope that's what you feel comfortable doing.
Well, I'm comfortable doing it, I, does anybody have any discussion on it or concern about the wording now? I know we've played around with it already a few times. In fact, I had thought we'd already settled this, but evidently no.
We just talked about it in the working group, we didn't talk about it on the bench.
Okay. How about you, Brad, what are you thinking on it now?
I'm-
Do you wanna, do you wanna-
Comfortable with it right now, I'm just reading through real fast to make sure there's nothing that-
Okay. If everybody's comfortable with it, I'm, I'm okay to move that we make the text change for Title fifteen as it relates to the, the garages and the, uh, accessory apartments.
I second that.
I heard you, sorry, I'm reading still. We do have a motion by Commissioner Wilkinson and a, and a second by Commissioner Tanner. I'm just gonna hold off one minute before we do a roll call vote, so... Does anybody else have any time to review it? Everybody good? So if we've all had time to review, uh, we do have a motion, and a second, I'll go ahead and, uh, do a roll call vote, starting on my right with Commissioner Wilkinson.
Aye.
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 And with the recommendation to go to city council for the Title fifteen changes, that is the end of our formalized meeting. We do probably can have some discussion afterwards, talk about calendars and meeting names, but if there's nothing more official, what I'd like to propose is we actually close the meeting, and then we can discuss future times and dates after it's closed, if there's nothing else official that needs to be recorded. No? Then I will make a motion that we- Then I will make a motion that we close tonight's meeting.
I'll second that.
I have a second. Tonight's meeting is now closed.